I'd like to call the board of this regular meeting of the Lenox Township Board trustees, May 8th, 2023, at 6:30 PM. Please join me in the budgets of the listeners.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda.
From one, should I change to the agenda? And that's a request to move item A down and make it become item H in all others just to be up one.
I make a motion that we approve the agenda with the movement as presented.
Second.
I have motion by trustee Curly, second by treasurer Holland, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Motion passes. Approval minutes.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of the April 3rd, 2023, for Michigan 2023. April 24th to 2023, which was a budget workshop, and April 25th, 2023, which was a special meeting.
Second.
I have motion by clerk Candell, second by trustee Clifford, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? All right. Public announcements. Public count.
I do have one. I do have one. Yes, the Lenox New Haven Memorial Day Parade will be Monday, the 29th. We have a ceremony at the cemetery. It's not much of a parade, it's just like a procession. And then ambulances be serving a hot dog lunch after, at about 1:00, after the cemetery service.
Thank you. Public count. All right, consent agenda. All items listed on this consent agenda are considered routine by the township board. It will be enacted by one motion. According to established township rules, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the public or four, several plus, at the party to the meeting. In which event, the chairman of the meeting may remove such items from the consent agenda for discussion and consideration under Agenda 81. Approval of the consent agenda shall be enforced by a majority, roll call vote of those present and voted.
Under the consent agenda, orders and bills.
Will you do your microphone?
Most people get better. I'll just top out. Under consent agenda, orders and bills, during the month, we paid $397,930.94. Currently, we have $275.69.60 for a total of $668,554.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda and the orders and bills in the amount of $668,554.60.
I second. I have motion by treasurer Holland, second by trustee Clifford, deputy clerk, please call roll.
Arnold?
Aye.
Clipper?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
All right, item removed for consent agenda, public safety report, new firefighter serving.
Good evening, honor of township officials and guests in the audience. Tonight, I want to invite here to the podium with me two probationary firefighters. A bit of a story behind what is a little difficult to call probationary. But invite them up here to the podium. Tonight, they'll be taking their oath and receiving their badges. These are John Alowski and Sue Baggins. They can also bring with them a member of their family who we're going to ask to pin their badges on in just a few minutes. I also have here with me tonight our fire chief, Marty Hartway, and our assistant fire chief, Cam Traubler. You know, this always feels like a very formal event, and well, it should be. These people put in a lot of work to get to tonight, but there's a personal side to all of these young people and their stories. And just being very brief, because I know the agenda is long, I want to mention something a little bit about both of them. John Alowski, we're privileged to have him here in our community, served at our fire department and our BPW, and most recently, our EMS. I have never in my career met a young man that when he walks into any building, he is so beloved from the moment he goes through the door. That's a lot to be said in this world of young people who seem to be able to spend more time looking at their phone and communicating. I don't know what his parents did, but I know his, I believe his dad is here with him tonight, and I wish he could bottle it, because we could sell it to other parents. So thank you, John, and thank you to your family. The other one, really, what a crazy story for me personally and for her as well. Sue Baggins mentioned tonight to me that she received her first firefighter badge 36 years ago. She's been with Lennox Fire Department for about 10 years, in a role as a dispatcher, and then as a dispatcher medical first responder, and now tonight, we will swear her in as a firefighter. Sue doesn't know this, actually, but as a young paramedic, she was one of my mentors. When Sue came into the emergency room at McLaren, all the young paramedics looked at her and said, "We want to be like her." And the reason we said it was because there is certain time in your life when you're sitting in a room and someone walks in and they command respect. They command respect not because of the tint of their badge, being gold or silver. They command their respect because the other professionals around them recognize that just maybe they're in fact the smartest person in the world. Sue was always that person to many of us in public safety. And so it's a real privilege tonight to be able to recognize my mentor, mine, to swear her in. With that, if I could ask? If I could ask you both to raise your right hand and just answer, "I do," or "I will," the following. I recognize at all times, I am a public servant, and ultimately, I am responsible for the safety and well-being of myself, my colleagues, and all citizens. I will accept responsibility for my actions by exhibiting honesty and integrity. I will promote diversity within our organization, ensure fair and open access to all who call for service. I will observe the highest principles of fairness and strive to meet those values which reflect honor upon the township and myself. I will seek to maintain and improve my professional knowledge, skills, and competence. Now, do you swear to follow and uphold the department's SOPs, state and federal laws, as well as the state of Michigan and U.S. Constitution? Finally, do you affirm you will not permit or cause any employee or agent acting on your behalf to do anything which would constitute a violation of this oath? Chief, will you present the badges? Township board members and citizens at large, on behalf of the Lennox Township Public Safety Department, it is my privilege to formally introduce to you these sworn professionals who I can now attest are fully prepared to serve both you and our citizens. Thank you for having me.
All right, thank you. All right, item number nine, unfinished business, item A, please center HVAC replacement proposal, Mr. Freyman.
Good evening, board. This evening, we're back in front of you. We're requesting approval this evening, as we have an item that should have, I thought we were moving around, but one of the things that the board did ask for was the engineering CAD drawings. Those are also in front of you this evening for the building. Those layouts are there. One thing that we spoke to both of the engineer CAD folks that put in bids was verifying the HVAC items. HVAC also verified that they will be giving us a final drawing before they actually start the installation. They would not be giving us drawing prior to that, because if they did not win the bid, they're not wasting their time or their money. So once again, this evening, we are back in front of you, this board, asking that we go forward with the HVAC bid that was put on hold last month, and requesting approval to award that bid for the community senior center to Hutchinson Mechanical for a total of $68,700. At this point in time, we'll open up for any questions or concerns.
I'd like to make a motion that we award the HVAC system for the community senior center building at 63975 Greshit to Hutchinson Mechanical in the amount of $68,700.
I'll second.
I have motion by clerk Candell, second by treasurer Holland, and deputy clerk, please call roll.
Candell?
Aye.
Hannel?
Aye.
Clipper?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
All right. Number 10.
Just as one quick update for you, so that the board and the committee is well aware, as of May 15th, we will start the roof removal. All the equipment will be in to remove everything off the roof. That will start as of May 15th. So we'll see activity and equipment out there. Thank you.
All right, number 10, new business, item A, please center engineering CAD drawings project, Mr. Freyman.
I do apologize. I thought I grabbed both things when I came up. All right, this evening, we're in front of you again. One of the key items that going through with this community senior center building was to get some preliminary CAD drawings as far as some of the structural changes in the interior. We're not changing anything on the exterior except for updating interior structural changes and layout and plan drawings. This was put out for bid. We did put it out. We had had three interested individuals. One of them was from a community building department that never came out and walked through the facilities, never followed through on the RFP items. With that, we wound up going down to two that actually bid out. They came out. They both spent an extensive period of time looking, going through, and giving, one of them came back with a preliminary drawing. We updated that, we sent it back to them. We actually are down to, I want to say the third or fourth drawing that we had looked at and went through. We had a total of two that actually presented. As you'll see this evening in front of you, there's a significant difference. And I believe the understanding was not clear, but we asked them for a very specified item for architectural work only and the engineering drawings on the interior and review of the plans. One of them actually came back wanting us to go forward, getting permission, lighting commission, so on and so forth. Those are in-house items that are handled, that go through our departments directly. With that being said, there was two bids that came in. Frank Solomon, architect, had bid in for a total of $11,000 for the engineered drawings and verifications. Anderson AEW, which is known as Anderson Hextine Westrick, came in for a total bid of $64,000. As I said, there was a significant bid difference. Although we did go back through, review, and verify exactly what they did, Frank Solomon, architect, engineering, came back and did the drawings, gave us the verifications. Anderson Hextine West has yet to produce drawings. So at this point in time, I'm recommending for us to move forward with Frank Solomon, the architect, for us to work internally and be able to provide this. We do have a time schedule that this board has looked at, and we'd like to prefer to keep moving forward with it. With that, supervisor's office would recommend that we move forward with Frank Solomon, the architect, for a total of $11,000 for drawings and specs required under the remodeling project today. Open for any questions or concerns.
I would like to make a motion to authorize the community center CAD slash engineering drawings project to be awarded to the low bidder, Frank Solomon, at the cost of $11,000.
I second. I have motion by clerk Candell, second by trustee Clifford, deputy clerk, please call roll.
Candell?
Aye.
Clipper?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
Hannel?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Item B, legal opinion authorization request, private clerk.
This request comes from our planner, and he has requested that the board authorize us to get a legal opinion from our attorney regarding a company wishing to do some development over at Bay River, the PUD. There's some question as to what is allowed through that PUD. So I would, at this point, make a motion to authorize Addis', the Addis Law Firm, to provide us with a legal opinion regarding the Bay River planning and development.
I second that. I have motion by clerk Candell, second by trustee Clifford, deputy clerk, please call roll.
Candell?
Aye.
Clipper?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
Hannel?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
All right, item C, Macomb County Drain Maintenance Match Program.
Mr. Akavetti?
Give me one second here to set up my operation. Don't mind. Thank you. Thank you to Lennox Township. I am Dan Akavetti, Deputy Macomb County Public Works Commissioner, and I thank you on behalf of Kavis Miller for allowing us to share some of the things that we've done and to discuss a request for Lennox Township to participate in our 2023 Drain and Match Program. Lennox Township has approximately 37 miles or 195,000 lineal feet of Macomb County Public Works jurisdiction drains. It's important to note that a couple of your major water courses, such as the Salt River and Coon Creek, are Eagle assets and natural water courses. We are extremely proud, under Commissioner Miller's leadership throughout the last several years, to actively renovate, restore, reshape, and remove blockages from our entire 4 million mile county drain network. And we're extremely excited that the Macomb County Board Commissioners has appropriated substantial resources in the form of a match program for us to touch some of these drains and fix some of these drains, many of which haven't been, haven't had substantial work on since their inception. Some of them date back to the early 1900s, many of them date back to the 1600s. Some of the, one thing that I'd like to point out in various communities I speak with and deal with when it comes to the movement and management of stormwater is what watersheds you're involved, you belong to. And Lennox Township has got a lot of great, a lot of sand, and a lot of fall from one end to the other. The Bell River watershed, the Salt River, and the north branch of the Clint River are pretty substantial watersheds. And this line right here is essentially a break, a high point where the water that hits on this, in the purple areas heading through Chesterfield to Baltimore and out the Salt River, and the water that hits on this west side heads in total other direction. You also barely miss the Bell River here north and Anger Bay watershed to the south. Some of the stuff that we do are blockages. These are two of the more impressive beaver dams, and both of them are located in Lennox Township on the Richmond and Leaf Drain that we've moved over the last couple of years. These structures are non-permitted, but the builders and engineers that actually do this are actually fascinating creatures, but they can cause substantial problems upstream and downstream. And these were two on the north end of Lennox Township that were actually causing problems to your neighbors to the north in the city of Richmond. I want to thank you for participating at the end of last year in the 2020 Match Program. This was a very nice project from 29 Mile Road to New Haven Road on the Ray Lennox Drain. What we basically do with these reconstruction projects is three phases. We may do one, or we may do all of them or just one of them, but essentially, it's a reshape, or it's a remove, remove blockage and deadfall, reshape the channel to the historical depth, and if necessary, restore that channel. Each one of those costs a different amount of funds, and each one of them is allowable under the drain code only on the Macomb County Public Works Drains. This, this map over here, it shows the public works drains, and on my screen here, you're seeing everything in this green color, light blue color. Those are county drains. The rest of them are natural water courses, and we do not have the authority to work on or the jurisdiction to work on. What, what the drain code allows us to do is manage that drain, that channel, and restore it to historical depth utilizing our amendments contract. So hence, we do not need additional public approvals. These all have easements of record, and they all establish the drain code. Anything you see here in blue, and I only got the two major ones drawn on this model, Salt River and the Coon Creek and any other natural water courses, those are Eagle. Those are Eagle jurisdiction. If anyone is going to reshape or redo those drains, Eagle approval is necessary. You can see there's some areas on the east side of the township that have no county drains that were, that were established. And those nearly 40 miles is what we're charged with managing. What I'm here to talk about today is participating in the 2023 Match Program, and for you guys, I believe it might span two fiscal years. We are requesting to do a pretty substantial program in Lennox Township, totaling $80,000 in total work, and we're requesting a $30,000 match from the township over the next two years. I believe your fiscal year is July to July, July 1st to June 30th. Last year, what you're looking at here is the Ray Lennox District, which was established in 1961. We worked on, and this, this district spans not only Lennox Township, but also includes a portion of Ray Township. The township line is about right where my cursor is going. Last year, we worked with this Ray Township and did approximately 4,500 feet of cleanup here. And Lennox Township in this little green section, we did about 3,650 feet. What we're proposing is to skip over this piece in the middle and move from 28 Mile Road to that drain's origin, which is the Coon Creek on the other side of Omore Road. And here's the reason why. After the rainfall on April the 2nd, there is, there was pretty substantial issues here upstream, and we feel that that cleanup downstream will help alleviate this potential property damage and structure damage and flooding that is occurring. It should be noted that the culverts under the road are road commission jurisdiction, even though it is a county drain. If it's an MDOT road, that's MDOT's responsible for that, but we do have a very good working relationship, and we're hoping to restore this entire section. Here's a couple of pictures of that day on April the 2nd. This was Saturday after that approximate two-inch water event that hit our area. And this was, this is what it looked like a little, a couple of weeks afterwards, but it did take some time to recede. So what we believe will be very helpful is a complete remove, reshape, and restore approximately 6,520 feet of this drain, including removing deadfall, spot blockage, and make sure that drain positively flows. And we're happy that it will continue to look at this entire drainage district. This section will ensure that that entire district has had its hands on us. So that's, that's the primary focus of this, of this drain match program, and I do believe you have the documents, some documents in front of you. Another area is the Harrison and Deer Creek that we thought needed some attention. Now, this could have, this piece of the project could actually change because there are substantial other areas in the township that we do get calls, not as much as some of our neighboring communities or the rest of, or the rest of the county. And a lot of that is because of your soils, your grade, and I think just the can-do attitude of your residents to actually solve and maintain these drainage problems. So this 3,000 foot is, I wanted to look at as well, along the Harrison Drain and along this little section of the Deer Creek, which is 30 Mile Road and Bates. I do want to talk a little bit about the Deer Creek, if I could. Deer Creek is a uniquely different drain than many in Lennox Township. And what you're looking at here is the floodplain map. So we are responsible for the movement of water, and we have easements that give us the rights to maintain and move that water on behalf of the district. The drainage district does not own the trees. The drainage district does not own the structures. We don't own those furnishings or those items that are in the drainage. So hence, alls we can generally do is work on the flow of the drain. Now, as we do that, it looks a lot better. You get, you get it to be a lot more aesthetically pleasing. The complication with this Deer Creek is even if we removed, and we will continue to remove these spot, the spot blockages, this whole area, which here, you're looking at the Deer Creek from the beginning, up north of 31 Mile where the floodplain starts, all the way down to 26 Mile, and I left out the rest of the piece which ultimately ends up in the north branch of the Clint River, is designed floodplain. And what that essentially means is that any, any substantial rain event, which might be two inches, everything you see there in blue is designed to hold water, and it is not a blockage issue. So our primary focus is protecting property and protecting, and protecting structures. We will do aggressive cleanouts in the Deer Creek, but I just want to manage your expectations that if it is in this FEMA floodplain, that changes the game a bit for actually lowering water, especially during heavy rain events. I would love to answer any questions, if you have any, and I have my, my map here that kind of can show every, everything that, or any questions I have. One thing I thought was pretty interesting, here's the Deer Here's the Deer Creek. Its origin appears at the north end of the township by the Smith Drain. And ultimately, the section's about 10.3 miles, and it ends at the north branch of the Clint River in Macomb Township. And there's a lot of fall. The elevation here, these aren't exact. It's about 670 here at the top end of the township. And I'm sure Sir Med knows all about these elevations. And looking at these elevations and how much fall you have, it's fascinating stuff for me because I'm in the drain business and infrastructure business. One other thing I do want to point out is I appreciate Lennox Township, your township engineer, and your leadership. Another thing we're working on is, and we have been working on, is our MS4 preventing the new stormwater requirements. Lots happened on stormwater in the last several years. And essentially, new developments, as they come in, are required to not only retain the stormwater, 5.2 inches worth, but they're also required to have a water quality feature. That's some of the new developments that are currently coming through. You'll see pretty big basins, and that basin will retain that 5.2 inches of water. It's intended to clean in either a four bay or a separate smaller basin like you see here, clean the first flush before it leaves, that first one inch. And the rest of the water is retained and released at a rate and a volume that will ensure that the downstream communities in that drainage district or parcels in that drainage district are not impacted. And we again want to thank Lennox Township for participating and for adopting those standards because in the long term, we're a long ways behind. But the answer, that's going to go a long ways to solving our long-term flooding issues. With that, I will ask any questions, answer any questions I have. And we are really looking forward to ramping up Lennox Township's program and finishing up that section of the Ray Lennox Drain. I have a list here that includes the Norton, 7,000-foot of the Deer Creek. That is on my, I guess, hot list to keep an eye on and look at. And we can work on any and all of these drains if issues come up. And on behalf of Candace Miller, I appreciate Lennox Township's support and look forward to answering questions and participating in this year's program. Any questions?
I have none.
If there are no questions, then the motion will be entertained.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposal from Macomb County Public Works Commission to remove, reshape, and restore the Ray Lennox Drain from 28 Mile Road to the Coon Creek Creek, as well as spot blockage and deadfall removal of 3,000 linear feet of Harrison Drain and Deer Creek Drain, 750 feet, for a total cost to Lennox Township $30,000.
I second. I have a motion by Clerk Kendell, second by Trustee Clifford. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll.
Kendell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Hahnle?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Reach out anytime and enjoy the weather. Thank you very much, Board.
All right, Item D 911 Operator Appreciation Resolution. Mr. Greenbaum.
Good evening, Board. This evening, we're coming forward and requesting that the Township of Lennox acknowledge with a resolution establishing April as a 911 Operator Appreciation Month. If you'd like, we can go ahead and read that, or would the clerk like to read that? Would you like to be tipped, or?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. It's my turn. I was actually coming up to remove stuff, and Mr. Reader, copy of the card. This is a resolution coming in front of the Board establishing, at a regular meeting, a Lennox Township Board of Trustees held tonight in Township offices at 63775 Gresham Avenue, Lennox, Michigan, 48050, on the 8th day of May 2023, commencing at 6:30 p.m. Whereas nationwide, over 35,000 9/11 operators are presently engaged in the occupation of furnishing immediate first responder assistance in crisis situations to the public at large. And whereas nationwide, 77.8% of 9/11 operators are women, while 22.2% are men. And whereas 9/11 operators are constant professionals who have received extensive training and have exhibited both intelligence and emotional stability in order to successfully perform an extraordinary difficult task under extreme stress. And whereas it will document that the constant crisis of performing as a 9/11 operator takes an emotional toll upon 9/11 operators resulting in multitude of stress-related issues. And whereas it's been documented nationwide that the average 9/11 operator will take over 2,480 calls in a calendar year. And whereas at a federal level, the week of April 9 through April 15 has been previously declared National Public Safety Telecommunication Week, honoring all 9/11 operators. And whereas the Board of Trustees in the Township of Lennox wishes to increase public awareness at the dedication of professionalism and sacrifice weight on behalf of the public at large by 9/11 operators. Now therefore, upon motion by the Board and supported by the Board, it is hereby resolved and establishes follows. It is hereby ordered and declared that the month of April shall be deemed as 9/11 Operator Appreciation Month within the Township of Lennox in order to give proper recognition, deserved appreciation, and increased public awareness for the overall performance of 9/11 operators who daily in their jobs meet the challenges faced as true first responders, providing fair comfort and protection to the general public. Any and all resolutions and conflict herein within are repealed only to the extent necessary to give full force and effect to the foregoing provisions. This resolution is deemed severable should any provisions, clause, word, or sentence be deemed unenforceable, and the remaining shall be continued, stayed, forced, full force and effect. With that, requesting the Board willing and resolve and make the resolution adopted.
I make a motion to approve the resolution declaring the month of April to be 9/11 Operator Appreciation Month.
Second.
I have a motion by Trustee Clifford, second by Trustee Gurley. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Hahnle?
Aye.
Kendell?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
I believe this motion, or this resolution, then becomes number 2023-4. Correct.
All right, Item D Park Plan Amendment. So this has gone to the Parks Recreation Committee. This has come by, this is recommended by them. This has been done after the hard work of our engineer and our Township DPW. And at this time, you're looking for a motion to adopt the new park plan as amended.
Make a motion that we adopt the new park plan as presented. Second.
I have a motion by Clerk Kendell, second by Trustee, sorry, Treasurer Hahnle. It's been a little day. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll.
Kendell?
Aye.
Hahnle?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
All right, Item F, Tons of Trucks Event Date Change Authorization. So this also comes from the Parks Recreation Committee. We're looking to change it from the weekend of the 9th of September, the weekend after, I believe that's the 14th?
16th.
16th? Yep. That is because it conflicts with the City of Richmond Good Old Days Parade, and not just the whole vessel. And we're concerned about lack of availability. So we're looking to hold it the 16th of September.
I'll make a motion to authorize the change of date of the Tons of Trucks Act to September 16, 2023. Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Hahnle, second by Clerk Kendell. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll.
Hahnle?
Aye.
Kendell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
All right, Item G Township Park Access Road. Mr. Trumley.
Yes, good evening. Working in tandem with the one item that you just approved being the park plan, in order to start developing this property for our future park expansion, one of the first things we need to do is create an access road to be able to get to that property with the machinery and equipment. First two steps in order to do that access road would be a total survey, basically a complete survey of the property, and developing a spec book for the design of that access road. So I come before you tonight requesting approval to move forward on those two items, which we would have to do regardless of how we move forward with that property. So working with our Township engineer, Mr. Safe, a total geographic survey for the property would be for $47,863. And then to design and create a spec book to bid it out of the project, we'd be looking at $76,903. If there's still discussion, the motion will be entertained.
I'd like to make a motion that the Township enter into an agreement to approve a topographic survey at $47,863 and a design specification book at $76,903, for a total of $124,886.
I second. I have a motion by Clerk Kendell, second by Trustee Clifford. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll.
Kendell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Hahnle?
Aye.
All right, Item H Seasonal DPW Park Position. Mr. Trumley.
Yes. This is something that recently came up due to some difficulties that we've been occurring with one of our full-time individuals. He's been dealt with some medical issues that has kept him from being able to come into work. It's been pretty sporadic. Looking at this time of year, what we're faced with trying to get going, trying to get on top of, I felt it only prudent to ask for some seasonal help until he is able to rectify what's going on with himself medically. Because right now, it's just too inconsistent for us to be able to make good progress week to week.
I make a motion we approve the hiring of a seasonal employee for the DPW department until that person gets his problems. Kendell?
Seasonal employee, the only one. Until October, right?
Correct. I mean, we've had a seasonal position in the past. We haven't the last few years. When we did have the seasonal employee, that is ran as late as October. And that's what I did indicate in my letter. If, you know, if it gets to a certain point where the need is not as great, obviously, we won't need that person for as many hours in that week.
I will second the motion to add a seasonal DPW position working under the DPW Superintendent Cam Trumley at the amount of $17 an hour for a total of no more than 30 hours a week.
All right, I have a motion by Trustee Clifford, second by Clerk Kendell. May the Deputy Clerk call the roll.
Clifford?
Aye.
Kendell?
Aye.
Hahnle?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye. Thank you. Number 11, Public Counting. All right, number 12, Closed Session. Item 8, Michigan Tax Repeal Legal Bar Certification.
I'd like to make a motion that we retire to a closed session at 7:15 p.m.
Second. I have a motion by Clerk Kendell, second by Trustee Clifford. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll.
Kendell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Hahnle?
Aye.
Motion to close session will be entertained.
I'll make a motion that we return from closed session at 7:30 p.m.
Second. I have a motion by Clerk Kendell, second by Trustee Clifford. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll.
Kendell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Hahnle?
Aye.
I would like to make a motion that we enter into and sign the letter from Hallahan and Associates and have our legal team act as co-counsel in this matter.
I have a second.
I have a motion by Clerk Kendell, second by Treasurer Hahnle. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll.
Kendell?
Aye.
Hahnle?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
All right, call from the boards. adjourned.
I will make a motion to adjourn at 7:32.
Is she second, though, if you may ask?
Second.
Okay. I heard something come out of you.